Good evening. If you would all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, unafraid, and invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are pleased to recognize six students who received a perfect ACT score. In addition, we are honoring 29 outstanding Parkway teachers who have been selected by their peers as their school's Teachers of the Year. Their dedication to students, community spirit, and personal commitment to excellence have earned them this honor. A special thank you to the Parkway Alumni Association for hosting a reception prior to tonight's meeting for the teachers and their families. The Alumni Association provides monetary awards and crystal apples for the elementary, middle, and high school Teacher of the Year recipients, which they'll receive at Appreciation Evening next month. First, I'd like to invite, in fact, I'd like to commend someone, the first person who will join us tonight, to introduce the six students who received a perfect score on their ACT. A week ago, he was Mr. Kevin Beckner. Tonight, he joins us as Dr. Kevin Beckner.
Well, thank you very much. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning the top score on the ACT varies from year to year, on average, less than one-tenth of 1% of students who take the ACT earn this top score. In the U.S., high school graduating class of 2017, only 2,760 out of nearly 2 million graduates who took the ACT earn the top score of 36. The ACT does consist of four sections, English, mathematics, reading, and science, and each is scored on a scale of 1 to 36. A student's composite score is the average of the four test scores, and the score for the ACT's optional writing test is reported separately and not included. The ACT is a curriculum-based achievement exam that measures what students have learned in school. Students who earn a 36 composite score have likely mastered all of the skills and knowledge they need to be successful in their first year of college courses in core subject areas. ACT scores are accepted by all major four-year colleges and universities across the United States. So, we're pleased to recognize these six students on this remarkable achievement, beginning first with a middle school student from West Middle, Wilson Gow. Next, we have three students to recognize from Central High, two of whom are in attendance tonight. First, please congratulate Anna Finn. Next, we have Felicia Chow. Unless she snuck in without me noticing, we do also want to acknowledge from Central High, Mary Zhu. From West High, please welcome Ronyk Baskar. And also from West High, Neil Tamala.
Next, I'd like to invite, let's see, sorry. Next, please welcome Dr. Chelsea Watson, Deputy Superintendent, to introduce our high school teachers. Also, please welcome Nico Toro, where are you, Nico? President of the Parkway Alumni Association, to join us in congratulating our Teachers of the Year.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Dr. Swartino, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. This evening gives us a chance to acknowledge some teachers who so often give so much of themselves. Every day, the teachers behind me and beside me, they give their students their all. They give their students their knowledge, their creativity, and their love. Tonight, we have the opportunity to let our teachers know that we know that they make a difference in the lives of our students. They make a difference in the lives of our community because of their work with our Parkway students. We're going to recognize all of our Parkway Teachers of the Year. It's our teachers' work every day to help our students become capable, curious, caring, and confident learners who are ready to tackle the world, respond to those challenges. Our teachers are also capable, curious, caring, and confident. They are role models that our students look up to each and every day, and we, as Parkway employees, are so proud to be able to honor them and recognize them for their talents and contributions. So, I will begin with the high school Teachers of the Year. When I call your name, please come forward to be recognized by the Board. Our Central High Teacher of the Year is Rick Holtman, math teacher. Fern Ridge, Lisa Stenger, special educator. North High, Carla Hurtline, business teacher. South High, Melissa Gebbard, English teacher. And Melissa is also our Parkway High School Teacher of the Year. And West High, Emmanuel Young, business teacher. At this time, Dr. Kevin Beckner, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, will come to the podium to recognize our middle school Teachers of the Year.
As with our high school Teachers of the Year, we have the honor of recognizing five fantastic middle school teachers who have also been recognized as their school's Teachers of the Year, beginning with from Central High, math teacher Tara Temple. I apologize. Central Middle, Tara Temple. We have two Teachers of the Year who are not in attendance but who we do want to also honor and recognize. From Northeast Middle, teaching PE and Health, Jason Crawford, and from South Middle, teaching ELA, Patty Powers. From Southwest Middle, science teacher Stephanie Reinhardt. And serving in the capacity both as Teacher of the Year for school, for all middle schools, and for our district, Mr. Tony Dwygans. Next, I'd like to invite up Dr. Gina Patini, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to the podium to introduce the elementary Teachers of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Beckner. Good evening. It is my honor and privilege to recognize those fantastic educators who educate our very youngest students in the district. Starting with Barrett's Elementary, Melanie Wood, 4th grade. Bell Reve Elementary, Stacy Throneberry, 1st grade. Carmen Trails Elementary, Sarah Rockers, physical education. Claymont Elementary, Laura Rockledge, kindergarten. Craig Elementary, Melissa Mulcahy, 2nd grade. Early Childhood, Maria Lindsay, special educator. Green Trails, Nancy Winkler, who is the counselor and is also our elementary district teacher of the year. Hannah Woods, Carrie Clemens, special educator. Henry Elementary, Julie Herman, counselor. Highcroft Ridge Elementary, Stacy Wright, 4th grade. Mason Ridge Elementary, Donette Randolph, 5th grade. McKelvey Elementary, Lauren Reames, kindergarten. Oak Brook Elementary, Angelina Zenzler, counselor. Piermont Elementary, Ann Thomas, kindergarten. Riverbend Elementary, Julie Donovan, 2nd grade. Ross Elementary, Kimberly Ragsdale, kindergarten. Shenandoah Valley, Justin Augustine, music. Sorrento Springs, Dr. Jenny Gray, library media specialist. And Ren Hollow Elementary School, Brittany Baum, instructional coach. Congratulations to all elementary, middle, and high school Teachers of the Year.
Congratulations to all of our students and our teachers, and also thanks to the members of the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee chaired by Sasha Walici from Green Trails Elementary. Although I know they enjoy reading the nominations, it's not always an easy task to narrow it down to the elementary, middle, high school, and district Teachers of the Year. Thank you to our students, teachers, their families, colleagues, and administrators for joining us on this special occasion. We are honored to have you with us tonight. This time, we'll take a brief break, and we'll resume the board meeting shortly.
It's coming fast.
Okay, now that we've gotten everybody out of the room that doesn't want to be here for the not-so-fun part.
Not everyone.
The not-quite-as-fun part. Let's see, we have several additions, corrections, and/or modifications to the agenda. We have 6.01 addendums to Agenda Item 10.05, approval of personnel items, and 6.02 modification to Agenda Item 10.19, approval of purchase of VMware and VX Rail server. 7.0 citizen statements, we have zero this evening. 8.0, the approval of agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for March 13th, 2019?
Sum it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. The annual organizational meeting will be held prior to the regular meeting on April 10th. An anticipated closed session will be held following the regular meeting. Next, I'd like to call on Dr. Chelsea Watson, Deputy Superintendent, to introduce Dr. Nathan Birch, new principal of Claymont Elementary, and Dr. Greg Matheson, new Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Well, good evening. And I take great pleasure in introducing both of these gentlemen to you all. So I am going to start with Dr. Nathan Birch, if you would join me at the stadium, at the stadium, at the podium. Is it baseball season? Maybe that's what I'm thinking. Dr. Birch is currently the principal of Beerbomb Elementary School in the Melville School District, where he has served for the past two years. Previously, he was an assistant principal in the Fox School District, where he also began his teaching career as an elementary classroom teacher over 10 years ago. Nathan holds a doctorate of education from Maryville University, a master's degree in educational administration from Missouri Baptist University, and a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Southeast Missouri State University. During the interview process, we received feedback from those who participated in the interviews. I'm going to share some comments that were written from parents and staff. He is warm, caring, and wants to do what is best for kids. He has been a leader in a diverse community. He values relationships, has experience in leading elementary school, knows the RTI process, and understands that the principal sets the mood for the school. His views on important teaching strategies and how to support teachers seem very aligned with our Parkway mission. He's enthusiastic about including parents. A common theme in his responses was to make sure students know they are loved, appears to understand and care that students have a variety of needs, and he seems prepared to work to meet those needs in whatever way necessary. And the final comment, I'm sorry, the final comment that I want to share said that Dr. Birch is interested in the long term. His focus on relationships, trust, and love. Dr. Birch is confident, knowledgeable, consistent, and clearly a team player. He exudes a genuine nature and passion for education. I was impressed by his answers to each and every question. He respects professional judgment. His doctorate is another bonus. And he was humble with all of his achievements. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Nathan Birch to the Parkway team as the Claymont Elementary School Principal, beginning July 1.
Thank you very much. I am very excited to be joining the Claymont team and the Parkway community. I've had the chance to meet a lot of the staff, some parents and students, and one thing that stood out is their immense pride and sense of belonging of Claymont. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue that work, to continue to build on that foundation, to make sure when those kids leave Claymont, they leave with the Parkway mission in mind, with a purpose and the skills that they need to go on and live a successful and happy life. So I look forward to that work and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Next, Dr. Greg Matheson, will you please join me at the podium? Dr. Matheson is currently the principal at Marquette High School in the Rockwood School District, where my daughter attends school, and he has served in this role since 2010. Previously, he served as the assistant principal of Marquette for three years. In addition to his experience in administration, Dr. Matheson brings roots from his roles as a high school math and computer science teacher, where he taught for seven years. And Greg was just named the 2019 High School Principal of the Year by the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals, among about 900 high school principals in the state. His education credentials include a doctorate in educational administration from Maryville, a master's in educational administration from Lindenwood, and his bachelor's degree is in mathematics education from the University of Missouri Columbia. In looking at Dr. Matheson's accomplishments, his talents are definitely a match for Parkway. During the interview process, participants also gave feedback on Dr. Matheson, and here are a few of their comments. He has empathy and a desire to listen, to understand, not win an argument. He seems very rounded and centered on what is best for students. His ability to learn and a desire to lead. He understands that TLA and Student Services must work hand-in-hand. He appears to be a leader, not afraid to have difficult conversations. He exhibited a thorough knowledge of Student Services programs and related initiatives. I liked his big-picture perspective and his language around leadership and vision. Also, his sense of humor was noted by a number of people in their feedback, as well as his passion and excitement about joining the Parkway team. So please join me in welcoming Dr. Greg Matheson to the Parkway team as the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Well, thank you for those kind words, Dr. Marty, Dr. Watson, Board of Education. Best thing I can say is I'm excited. Everybody I've talked to and I've heard from and through the interview process, which I told Dr. Marty earlier, is a pretty intense process that really gets you to reflect and figure out who you are and be able to explain that. And the people on Parkway really care about our kids, and that's one thing that I'm excited about, to help us continue to build, to work towards all kids being able to thrive in our community, working through character education, to working with students with special needs. This is an exciting time. I'm excited to be here, I'm humbled at the same time, and I just thank you for the opportunity to lead here in Parkway. Thank you.
I just want to, Dr. Watson did such a great job, but we're very excited about these two individuals joining us. We have a few other positions to fill, assistant principals, and they'll be coming your way, but we're so excited to have these two gentlemen with their experience and their background and bringing us new ideas. But Greg, we didn't harm you too badly there, did we, through the process?
No, it was thorough.
But we did have a thorough process for both and try to do and get to know our candidates very, very well. But again, we want to welcome them and thank them, and they're going to be very busy in their transition to Parkway, and as well as finish up their current roles. Thank you.
Okay. Four candidates have filed for the two open positions of the Parkway Board of Education. The candidates, and if they're here, they're welcome to stand and be recognized. Candidates in order of filing and as their names will appear on the ballot are Farida Hassan, Sam Sortino, Sudhir Rathad, and Pam Hill. The election is Tuesday, April 2nd. Terms of Sudhir Rathad and Sam Sortino expire in April 2019. Forward Liaison Reports. Start down there with you, Sudhir.
Awesome. So last week, we had workshop with the NEA staff and the union, and it was a really great way to learn about what we did, what we are doing, and what we want to do. And you can see the progression path of how far we have come in Parkway in terms of achievements. And a lot of the team, it was all divided, the board members were divided into different groups, and we saw each and everyone coming out with the great ideas, and those will be now put into the plan and revised again. But the whole workshop was fabulous, and I think we had a great success with that. So thank you all.
Thank you. Along with the other board members, I also attended the workshop, and I think Sudhir did a good job of describing it. It was a great experience and a really great opportunity for us as board members to get to talk to some teachers and really get their perspective on the district. I had a number of other Parkway-related activities this month that were unfortunately snowed out, but just this week, I was able to do some of our Goal One interviews with Dr. Kevin Beckner. For those unfamiliar, Parkway, we do assessment in a number of ways. There's some objective ways, obviously, but then the subjective interviews to see if we're achieving our goals and reaching our mission with all the students is done on a student-by-student basis. And along with Dr. Beckner, I was able to interview some students, and they were elementary school students, and it was a really fun experience to hear their thoughts and their perspective.
I don't have anything to add to this.
Just make something up.
No need. I've got it covered. On Monday, March 4th, the Special School District Governing Council held its quarterly meeting, at which that meeting, we went forward with our Board of Education election process. And I'm pleased to report that Parkway has a new board member at the Special School District. Her name is Katie Potroff. She is a Claymont mom and does have a student with special needs. And we also have from Subdistrict Number Four, which is representing the Riverview Gardens School District, Latrissa Morgan. And she is a parent as well with a student with special needs. And so we were very pleased that we were able to get some very highly qualified candidates to serve on the Special School District Board of Education, to serve in these capacities for these two districts.
I'll share three quick things. The first one being, I got a chance to stop by the Parkway Normandy STEM Saturday. I came by on the last day, I came by in the morning, so the students are still working in their teams, working seriously, and I'll say, I knew some of the students and they didn't want to talk to me. They had their project, they were heads-down working. It was pretty impressive. And then two, last week, my work-life and my volunteer life crossed. We had 25 students from Parkway West come out and volunteer with Gateway Greenie. I thank Ms. West and Mr. Donaldson for bringing those kids out, and the report back from my staff was that they did a great job. They had some tough jobs in terms of moving mulch and pulling apart wood, so I thank them for coming out. And then lastly, I got a chance to go to the student-led candidate forum on Monday night, and went to the congressional one in the fall. The students did a great job. It was fun for me as a board member, first of all, not to be up there, but also to hear their questions and their concerns that they have right now. And this election has been a lot quieter than last year's election, so please do go out and vote and tell your neighbors to vote on April 2nd.
I want to comment also on the Communications Lab. This has taken place over several years, and it's really an incredible experience for the board, the administration, and teacher representatives to meet together and talk about what's working, what's not working, what do we need to think about for the future. It's a collaborative venture. We are on the same page, moving in the same direction, and I think that's what makes Parkway so great. And I think the results of it certainly will show as time goes on. I did attend the candidate forum on Monday. It was kind of stressful. Usually, we get two minutes, we had one minute, and I was prepared for about three. But anyway, it was really a pleasure to work with the students and to see the students that are interested in the election process for boards, and we appreciate all the efforts of Mr. Lee Johnson, the sponsor, as well as Zaba Namine, who was the student coordinator. They did a great job, and I appreciate it, and I think all the candidates did as well. Last evening was a spectacular event, it always is, the All-District Orchestra Concert. I recall when we used to have the concerts at Quinny Park, and there's no way to get that massive group of violinists and cellists and everyone else in that venue anymore. This is overwhelming. I'm not sure how many elementary kids there were, but there were a huge, huge number. A large number of middle school, and of course, the symphonic orchestra, I mean, they're masterful. I mean, they're fantastic. It's amazing to see the progression over the years of kids in the fifth grade going to middle school, then onto high school. And we have to give a lot of credit to our teachers, our teacher-directors who work with students every single day, and they do an incredible job, and the results are what we saw last night in terms of performance.
It was quite a performance, and I can tell you, there were 710 fifth graders, and in total, we had over 1,000 instrumentalists last night. It was quite an event. In the last few weeks, I also attended, Matt referred to, the kids from West High came down, and that was part of their day of service in conjunction with Special Olympics at West. And I actually visited a group of West High students who were serving that day at the Parkway Food Pantry. And they chose that location, and together, they boxed up, I don't know how many thousands of meals that will be used over the next week when Parkway takes a break and we go on spring break. The Food Pantry has committed to providing those meals to those kids, not just for the weekend, like they usually do, but for the entire week of spring break. So it's quite an undertaking, and I was glad to see all the effort that they were putting into making meals for people they don't even know. So that was pretty cool. I wanted to get to the STEM Saturday, but I wasn't able to make any of those, but I did go to STEM Fest that we had over at Southwest Middle, and that was its normal, great setup. A number of our administrators were there, working hand-in-hand with kids, showing them different projects and helping them create different things out of ordinary. We were making robots out of all sorts of cardboard, and it was just really cool to see their imagination and creativity at work, and so it was a great event. And then, as Kevin mentioned, we've been doing student interviews. I got to do some at South High earlier this week, and did seven in the space of two hours or so, and just a wide variety of opinions and information that students shared with us about how Parkway is doing and how Parkway has served them in different ways, and we look forward to compiling all that data that we're learning this season and putting that to use towards making Parkway even better. And that's about all I've got.
We should probably clarify that where we were last night. We never said where we got all those people on the floor. We were at the Family Arena. This was, as Sam said, we've outgrown Quinny, and so we were at the Family Arena. And the overall consensus, I think, with the video boards and the space and the comfort was wonderful, as I left a lot of compliments, and I think we had over 1,000 students on the floor. So it was a wonderful, wonderful evening. Jeff Lackey, I don't know, Jeff, is Jeff here tonight? Jeff, but Jeff, probably resting because he coordinated all that and rehearsals, and so congratulations to not only to teachers, but to Jeff for getting it all organized. I also participated with Amy Joyce this week in some student interviews at Barrett's, and we had a great time. Amy and I just, those kids just had so many things. A couple of them, I actually, we were touched by their comments about what they're learning and about kindness and caring, and it was like hearing some of our mission words come alive, so I was really, really excited to be part of that. I've also had the pleasure of serving some lunches, or breakfasts, I should say, not lunches, breakfasts the last couple of weeks, as part of National School Breakfast Week, and Marlene Pfeiffer has organized. And there's nothing like seeing students in the morning. Many of them, after long bus rides, have a breakfast for them, and so I've been at Henry and Claymont the last couple of weeks. But a lot going on, and we're leading up to spring break. I think we all need a little bit of a break here for the final stretch, but again, board members, thank you for all your attendance and attention to some of the great things we got going on. And I will say, Debbie, thank you too for your support on the new board member. I too, I've met her, and I think she's going to be a wonderful representative.
And I should have mentioned to thank our previous board member, Ms. Listina, who served in that capacity for Parkway for many, many years on the Special School District Board of Education. So we really appreciate all of her years of service and are looking forward to our new representative. I failed to mention one thing, if I may. I'd like to let everybody know about our board chats that we're going to be hosting. We'd like to see more attendance at these. We've held these in the past, and we haven't had much attendance. On Thursday, March 28th, in the morning, Dr. Sortino and I will be in the west area. Our specific time and location will be determined later, and I guess it'll be posted maybe on the website. And then on Tuesday, April 16th, in the evening in the north area, Mr. Schindler and Mr. Seltzer will be meeting with the public at that time. So if you'd like to keep your eyes out for that and join us, it's our way of trying to get out into the community and talk with the community more about what's going on at Parkway, and just meeting with everybody in a more informal way.
Mr. I do have just one more thing. Congratulations to our Central High School Girls Basketball Team, which are going to be in the semifinals. They play Friday afternoon in Springfield against Jefferson City, a really tough game. And I know Mike Roth has been working hard to make sure we're going to get students there. A lot of buses are being used, but I think I just heard that we're going to get most of the students that want to go down and experience that. I was at the quarterfinal game on Saturday night at Lindenwood, and it was just a wonderful game. Our students, a lot of school spirit and a lot of staff there, and it was a wonderful night. So congratulations to the girls, and best wishes to them as they move on in the tournament. This is the first time the Central girls have gone this far in a tournament, at the state level, Final Four.
Okay, upcoming subcommittee meetings. We have Thursday, March 14th at 4:30 PM. That's a Student Services Subcommittee meeting, and it'll be held at ISC. On Tuesday, March 26th at 4:30 PM, we'll hold the TLA Subcommittee Meeting at ISC. Next, we have action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the March 13th, 2019 board material?
Sum it.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. We have no policy review tonight, however, we do have a report. So I'd like to invite Michael Seppi, Director of Community Education for Parkway-Rockwood. Join us up here.
Good evening, Dr. Marty, members of the board. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I do want to apologize because I'm having a little voice thing, so I apologize for that in advance. It's always great to be here each spring because it gives us an opportunity to first reflect back on all the great things that are happening, and then allows me an opportunity to share a few minutes on all the great things that are coming. So I first want to start by saying happy anniversary. If you take a look up at the screen, we are in the fifth year of the partnership of Community Ed between Parkway and Rockwood School District. So for those of us that were around many, many years ago to where we are today, it's really exciting to be here, so happy anniversary. This first slide is just kind of an overview reminder. Some of this is similar to last year, but just a reminder about the different program areas that Community Ed entails, from adult ed and literacy to sports, to visual and performing arts and everything in between. There are seven different program areas in Community Ed. As we look back at FY18, excuse me, we filled just over 50,000 seats in Community Ed, and it's important to remember what that means. So when we're talking about filling seats, we're talking about, can vary by program area. So for example, if I'm in Adventure Club, I'm one seat all year. But if I take swim lessons and I take three sessions in a row, that's three seats. So depending on the nature of the program, the number means a little bit different, but collectively, what we do in Community Ed is we fill seats. And so just over 50,000 seats were filled in Community Ed this past year. As we look at Parkway Adventure Club, which is of course the largest program, it shows you the progression of growth in Adventure Club over the last four fiscal years. In FY18, we were at 1664, and this year, as of about a week ago, when I had to submit this board presentation, we are at 1866. So the progression you will see, the enrollment continues to go up in Adventure Club. Our sports leagues, which kind of next-largest group of programming, you could just see the various growth there. Surprisingly, I will tell you, girls volleyball is just really growing tremendously, both in fall and spring, to the point that we are going to start looking at now practice times at the elementary levels, which previously, we were able to accommodate that at the middle school levels, but because we have so many teams, which is a great thing, we'll start to look at elementary. And the last thing that I wanted to just touch on, the Summer Expo, which we have every year, we rotate that between Parkway West High School and Marquette High School. This year, it was at Marquette, scheduled for February 10th. It was snowed out. So we quickly scrambled, and a week later, on President's Day, held the event, and we set an attendance record. So over 1,900 people came through the door in four hours. We had over 100 exhibitors there that all had program opportunities, summer program opportunities for the community. It was really, really a great event. Dr. Marty, I appreciate you coming by. So it was really great to see, it has really evolved into an event that parents look forward to. So we're really excited about that event. Okay, so on this day in Community Ed, in case you're wondering, today, March 13th, over 4,000 participants are participating in a Community Ed program. Now, a lot of that is Adventure Club, between the two districts, as you might imagine, but what's really interesting, and I love telling this story anytime I get to do a presentation on a day, today in Community Ed, our youngest participant is 22 months old, doing a parent-child class, swim class, and our oldest participant is 85 years old in adult co-ed volleyball. So it's just really great to see the expanse of participation that we have from community And just, I'll go through this quickly, just kind of an overview of what it takes to make it work. I talked about 50,000 seats being filled. In the course of a fiscal year, over 500 employees work for Community Ed. That's a combination of full-time, part-time, and seasonal. We work with 30 to 40 different community organizations that offer programming throughout the year to bring that into the buildings. And this year alone, over 450 volunteer coaches it takes to run all these sports leagues, and right now, we have 126 volunteers in the Adult Education Literacy Programs, and that's a combination of ESL and high school equivalency. So you're looking at upwards of 600 volunteers a year to make Community Ed programs run. We started a new program, a new recognition in the past year. It's really an opportunity for us in Community Ed. We go out once a month, and between Parkway and Rockwood Schools, there are so many people who work for the districts that aren't employees of Community Ed, but we can't do what we do without their support. And so we started an effort last year where each month, we go out and just say thank you to someone. And these are folks throughout both districts that are nominated by our staff, just whether it's working with them day-to-day, or sometimes, we don't even get to see them face-to-face because, for example, with Julie Masterson, she's in the HR department, so it's all email and phone. And so I just wanted to take a moment and recognize there were four folks here in Parkway. And so I just wanted to take a moment and recognize there were four folks here in Parkway since the start of the school year who we could not do what we do without their support. So from Joyce Stevanport at West High, to Julie Masterson in the HR department, to George Smith at Purn Ridge, and Stacy Bailey at Bel Rioe, we just really appreciate their So as we look ahead, we've really made a transition now from implementation, meaning getting everything up and running, to now continuous improvement. And so for us, that has three different components. The first is, how do we continue to expand and enhance program opportunities for patrons, make the programs better? How do we improve customer service to the people that are signing up for the programs? And then how do we provide better customer service to our internal customers? So I'm just going to quickly go through those three areas, and I won't touch on every one of these bullet points. But we're really taking a focused look in Community Ed right now at the customer experience. And so for us, it's more than just about what happens while you're in the program. What we want to know is that you have a great experience with us from the minute you learn we have a program until when the program is finished and we're sending you an evaluation and asking how it went. And so we are really, as a team, taking a look at how do we identify opportunities for improvement throughout the entire process. And so when we look at enhancing and expanding opportunities, just a few examples, this summer, what we have been hearing from parents, a challenge for them is the first and last week of summer. Because what happens is, our largest program, Adventure Club, while they have a summer camp program, they're taken down from the school year to get set up for summer, and then the last week of summer, they're taken down from summer to get set up for the school year. So there has been a void in terms of full-day capacity, what we have heard from parents. And so we have a program called Summer Blast that we've implemented, which is really, think of it as best of Community Ed. So it's a full-day program for a week where kids can come, and throughout the day, they go through five different periods of the day, and each day, they experience a different program area of Community Ed, which you may recall from the first slide. And what's great about that is, working together as a department, we're able to accommodate 250 kids in that program for each week. So we went from having very limited capacity to now being able to serve 250 kids. And we can't do that without the support of the schools. So there are, we are doing the first and last week of summer, and we are doing the week of July 4th. The week of July 4th is going to be at West Middle, and the last week of the summer is going to be on the Central Campus. So we really appreciate Mike Roth and the administrators of the schools who really worked with us to make that happen. In the interest of continuous improvement, we are conducting needs assessments on both our summer programming opportunities, as well as our, the way we deliver adult programs. We are looking at the Golden Key Card Program. You may recall that is for residents age 6 or older. They can get unlimited 50% discounts to as many Community Ed programs as they want. And so what we want to do is expand that and make that more of an experience. So right now, we just kind of say it's there, but we want to really personalize the Golden Key Card Program for residents. And so that's going to look like us doing more outreach, more communication. It's going to look like us designing programs specifically for Gold Card members. Think of it maybe as a monthly, first Monday of the month, we're going to have a special program for Gold Card members. So we really want to take this opportunity to reach out to that group and invite them into what's going on. And then the last piece that I'll touch on is, I've been having some really great conversations with Dr. Beckner and some of his staff about how we might provide some new trip opportunities for students. So I'm really excited to be able to bring some information forward in the coming weeks to you all. So that was about enhancing and expanding opportunities, programs. Now I want to take a minute and just talk about how we plan to improve customer service to those that are signing up. If you checked your mail recently, you might have received the new redesigned Community Ed catalog, which looks more of a magazine format. That's a picture there on the screen. In addition to that, we are going to be looking at redesigning the website to make it more user-friendly. I'm very excited to say we now have live chat. You come online during the day, and you have a question, you can live chat us, we'll answer you in real time. You can text in your questions to us instead of having to call, because if that's more convenient for you, we want to make it convenient. We are looking at all different ways, we call them touchpoints, all different ways that the customer can interact with us. And we're going, we're in the process of first documenting all the touchpoints, and then understanding, are there any processes within each touchpoint that we can remove friction for the customer? Can we make their experience better? We're really focused on improving the customer experience this year. Lastly, I will tell you that we always do evaluations at the end of programs, but we do have some programs that span either the full school year or many, many months. So Adventure Club is a great example. We are now going to be doing mid-program evaluations, which are very much just touchpoints, how's it going? It is not a full evaluation, but it's really an opportunity to allow our patrons to say, hey, red flag, something's going on, so we need to delve further. And then, of course, at the end of the year, we'll continue to do the full program evaluations. As we look at improving customer service to internal customers, I look at those as principals. So since November, I've been in the process of meeting with all 60-plus principals individually between Parkway and Rockwood, and I'm happy to say I'm up to number 57. So I have three more to go, and I'm almost finished. But it's been really great. It's been a really great opportunity to, one, learn more about the schools, the school community, what their needs are, but then, secondly, to share some of the information I'm sharing with you tonight, and better understand how we can partner with schools to deliver opportunities, not only for the students, but maybe the parents, or maybe the grandparents. So that's been a really, really great opportunity, because we want schools to understand, I know we ask a lot of buildings, but we want to be seen as a value-added and not a burden-added. So we're having some really great, I'm having some really great conversations with principals on that. Finally, as we're kind of doing the looking ahead, the last couple of things I'll give you an update on is staffing. We continue to see an increase in the number of special students, participants, youth and adults with special needs wanting to be in our programs. We think it's great. We want to make sure we're providing the best experience possible. And so we are in the process of recommending an inclusion specialist to our team, who would really be the point of contact from intake of registration to start a program. So this person will work with Alyssa Gratz, will work with the buildings, if it's a student who goes to a Parkway School, so that the parent has one point of contact, the school has one point of contact, and we can better serve the need. We're really excited about that. It's been on our radar for about 18 months, and we're just really excited about, hopefully that's coming to fruition. We are continuing to work our tails off to find staff for Adventure Club. And as you know, and maybe you've gotten an email or two or a phone call about waitlists, it is something that we can always do more of as it relates to recruitment of staff, but I will tell you, we are taking an extremely focused look at that. I'm very pleased to say that on the first day of school this year versus the first day of school last year, between the two districts, we are able to enroll somewhere between 300 and 400 more students on the first day of school in Adventure Club. Now that doesn't mean that we had a net increase overall, it just means we got them in sooner. And so we really have been identifying ways we can better recruit. And just in case you're interested, if you've ever driven by a school and seen three yard signs in a row that says Adventure Club is hiring, we ask all of our incoming employees, how do you hear about us? That is the number one way. Yard signs are the number one way that they're hearing about us. So hopefully, we will continue to do that. We are looking at doing, in implementing some employee incentive programs for existing staff. So for example, in the summer, when Adventure Club numbers go down, they have this staff. Might they be able to work in some of our other Community Ed programs to help us provide service to students? So we're looking at ways to cross-utilize staff and incentivize some of those staff to work. Simple things as text to hire. We now have a number, you can text "hire me" to this certain number, and we will send you information on how you can work with us. So we're doing, always identifying more and more ways that we can try to recruit more staff. I'm very excited, working with Patty and Mike Mertens over the last several months. As you know, when Community Ed at the end of the year, there's a surplus, the question is what happens to the money? And so we've been working with Patty and Mike on saying, how do we reinvest some of that money? Some of that Parkway, Community Ed surplus. And so I'm excited to say that this summer, our first major project is the replacement of the gym floor at Mason Ridge Elementary. Working with Mike Mertens, he has identified, if you've been in the elementary gyms, some of them have what's called terra flex, which is like a sports court. It sort of looks like wood, but it's kind of this cushiony. I understand there's maybe about 12 elementary gyms that don't yet have that, but that seems to be the standard for Parkway moving towards. And so the first one up on the radar was Mason Ridge. So we're really pleased, I'm very pleased, that that is an opportunity for the surplus funds from Community Ed for Parkway where those can be reinvested. Additionally, as I mentioned, we use several middle schools for activities, a lot of that's volleyball. So over the last three years, all the volleyball systems at Central Middle, South Middle, Southwest Middle, and West Middle have been replaced using Community Ed surplus. So we're really, I think it's fantastic when we're able to not only reinvest into Community Ed programs, but it benefits the school. It's a win for everyone. And so when parents talk to me about where the money goes, and I'm able to explain, it's a very positive conversation, because it's a win for everyone. So that's everything I have. So again, happy anniversary. Certainly, we appreciate, I appreciate the ongoing support of the board, Dr. Marty, all the building principals. We cannot do what we do in Community Ed without the partnership of the team, so thank you very much. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much, Mike. We really appreciate you being here. I'm thrilled to hear that you found a way to recognize the champions of Community Ed. There's many of them that are unsung heroes, and I know you know that, so I'm happy to hear that. You talked a lot about growth. What challenges do you see in the next three to five years with our program?
It's a great question. So they're primarily, or two, staffing and space. Neither of those are meant to be a negative, it's the reality of what we do. And so as we look at, for example, the summer needs assessment that we're doing right now, which is incorporating by, I forgot to mention, part of that needs assessment includes, we're doing six to eight different focus groups around both districts where we're inviting parents to come in and tell us what they want to see. But the biggest challenge for us is staffing. Venture Club's a great example. You know, while we have increased the entry salary, if you drive down Olive, you know, the Arby's is paying more, Walmart's paying more, and that's just a challenge that we have ongoing. And then, and then the second reality is space. Again, not meant to be a complaint at all, it's just the reality that there's already a lot of stuff going on. And so what I would say to you is, I think what you'll see is, some of our growth is going to be more, maybe less in, we need a gym, we need a field, and more things. For example, we're seeing great success with parent-child programming. Things like parent-child learn to play the guitar, learn to speak French, cooking, learn to paint. Those don't take fields, those don't take gyms, but those can be done in a fax room or a classroom. And so I think that's where we're identifying some opportunities now, because there's plenty of that space available, working with the schools. And so, you know, the other reality we deal with is, it's always a moving target, because we're asking parents to pay discretionary dollars towards what we're doing, we need to make sure that we're meeting what the interest is at the moment. And so while we think we know, we're really changing our focus to now saying, parents, families, residents, tell us. We don't want to assume we know. And that's part of that continuous improvement I talked about, where we're reaching out and saying, tell us what you want, versus us assuming we know what you want.
I noticed that the numbers for Adventure Club keep going up every year, which I think is wonderful. And I was a past user of the YMCA program when it, and then was part of the transition and experiencing that with the Adventure Club. So can you, can you tell us, how is Adventure Club run now? And are you finding that it's being successful? Are you needing to make changes to it? Is it, because my understanding is that the Adventure Club, as it's being run through Parkway, Rockwood is different from how the YMCA's program was running?
Yes, so I will, thank you for your question. I will speak to our program, meaning Adventure Club, through my meetings with all the principals. And I think all but one, between Parkway and Rockwood, I've met now with all but one of the 37 principals. And I specifically asked them, how's Adventure Club going? And I can tell you, every single one of them is extremely pleased with the Adventure Club program in their building. We all wish we had more staff, everyone understands that. But in terms of the impact, in terms of the quality, in terms of the benefit that the Adventure Club program is delivering, what I hear from schools is, they love the connection that having a program run in-house, the ability for the staff to create connections with the school staff during the day. So for example, there have been instances where Adventure Club staff will sit in on an IEP meeting, because they're going to have the child after school, and so they can better understand, working with the teacher, working with the parent, on how to serve those needs. And so I can only speak to the feedback that I've gotten. And right now, we, actually, right now, we have the end-of-year evaluation out to parents in both districts about Adventure Club. So that'll go over the next several weeks. But traditionally, the comments we get is that they love, what I love most hearing is when a parent says, and we hear this all the time, my kid doesn't want to leave when I come to pick him up.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that's the best, that's the best feedback we can get.
Thank you. It's a great service. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you again for recognizing the five-year anniversary, this great partnership between Parkway and Rockwood. And I think we have, we have some more, some more exciting things to share about a partnership with Rockwood.
Before we do that, I just want to tell you how it's been such a pleasure working with Mike and his staff. And you can tell, when Mike talks about Parkway, he talks about, he drops people's names as if they're colleagues, and they are. And so Mike's got to know, you know, from Patty's department to Mike Roth, and a lot of, you know, you know the principals pretty intimately. So I give Mike a lot of credit. He's really invested time, and it's not an easy job. He's got the two large districts, and so he's really worked hard. And I will tell you, five years ago, or six years ago, seven years ago, when we actually started this discussion, it took a couple of years, but I had great hopes, but it exceeded my expectations. A lot of it has to do with the fact that Mike already had a wonderful program started in Rockwood, and his willingness to extend that our way, and then, you know, the Adventure Club has just been a wonderful addition. And you could see those numbers, things are just really hopping. And so, Mike, thank you, and I, again, it's exceeded my expectations. And a lot of it has to do with the great work and great support that you bring, and the great energy you bring to this program. You know, you could tell, Mike really enjoys his work, and so does a lot of his people that we've got to know, so.
Great, thanks so much. And I should say thanks to Mike Roth, because he gets my calls a lot. So thanks for taking those, Mike. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
And that leads us into further discussion. So Dr. Knoll, would you come to the podium, please? Appreciate you coming tonight. I know you've had a busy day.
Wonderful.
Yes. Well, so one of the things that we learned in this Community Ed partnership is that, you know, when I arrived at Parkway, we had a Community Ed program, it was going well, but when we investigated how we could grow it, I know Paul Tandy and Desi Kirchhoff went out to Rockwood, and they came back and says, you gotta see this program. And so, you know, we would, we would not be where we are if it wouldn't have been for our ability to partner with Mike and Rockwood. And so the last couple of years, Eric and I, Dr. Knoll and I, have had some discussion about our, about mutual programs that our two districts are involved in. And I have to say that I am just blown away and awed, and I think Chelsea and Kevin Beckner and others, and our high school principals, who the last couple of weeks have got to know a little bit about the early college program, we're just in awe and amazed at the work that Eric and Rockwood has done. They're going to graduate, and Eric, I'll let him talk a little bit more about this, but they're going to graduate in this spring, 30 Rockwood students are going to graduate with a high school diploma and an associate degree. Wow, at 18. And then I was at the board meeting last week at Rockwood, talking about what we're talking about here tonight, and some of those students already got plans, somehow they already got enough cred, they're gonna, I think, gonna finish their bachelor's in a year, and then they're gonna have a master's by 19 and 20 years old. And I look at that program, and this isn't for every student, but for some students, what a wonderful opportunity. And Eric has looked our way and asked, you know, about our Spark program. And so again, you know, they've done some great groundwork with an early college program, working with St. Louis Community College and Wildwood. We have done a lot of work under the leadership of Kevin and Lisa Meredith initially, and of course Jennifer Stanfield, to build the Spark strands. And, you know, both districts could stay separate, and we could start working at the early college, but it's going to take a lot of time to get where Rockwood is, and Rockwood could say, we're going to start the Spark program. But again, we already got kind of the model. And so as Eric and I have talked, we came to the conclusion that maybe the best thing we could do in our two, you know, relatively large districts, and with the staff we have, is look at some way that we could build on the strengths and the startup that we both have worked on. So with that, we're pleased to announce tonight, and I was at Rockwood last week to partner with Eric in the discussion with their board, and I invite Eric tonight to talk to you about what we're going to do next year. And it's really a start, it's a little bit of a toe in the water. Rockwood is going to allow us to have a small group of students with the staffing of the Rockwood district. Todd, what's Todd's last name?
Minicello.
Todd Minicello, who's been, what we've learned is just on a wonderful Todd Minicello, who's been, what we've learned is just done a wonderful job there. He's the onsite counselor for the students in the early college program. But he's willing to take on, or Rockwood's willing to take on, perhaps somewhere between eight and 10 Parkway students. And we're going to open up some strands in our six strands of Spark for Rockwood students, again, perhaps eight to 10. So it's toe in the water, but we're starting. And the relationship already, the last couple of weeks, Dr. Watson's been meeting with Lisa Count, Dr. Count, and others from Rockwood. The principals have been involved, the high school principals have visited. We had a chance to visit Wildwood, and they visited our Spark program. So we're underway. And it's, we're excited about the opportunity, just to learn. And my belief is, and I think Eric would agree, although he's not going to be here to see it, but we'll invite him back, we think in a couple of years, we'll have a number of Parkway students in the early college program, which we'll probably have to staff differently. There'll be some ways we'll have to get more involved. And we will see a lot of opportunities for Rockwood students coming our way, increasing the number of students, and maybe multiple sections of some of the Spark programs we have, and then maybe some different strands growing because of the interest of both districts. So with that little introduction, I don't want to take, say everything, but I just want to say Eric has been a great colleague.
Quite the pleasure.
And I know he's anxious to speak, talking about stuff. Eric's been a great colleague to work with in this venture, and so, no more. I'm not going to make you stand there and look pretty. You gotta, you gotta talk it. So this is Dr. Knoll.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Nice to see you all. Thanks for allowing me to come speak a little bit. I think most of you know that I've got some Parkway pedigree in me, because I spent five years in the district as an administrator. Kevin over there was a student when I was assistant principal at North High School.
My understanding is all the records are sealed from there.
Yes, in here, right? But great to come back and see a lot of familiar faces. I did, I did tell Dr. Matheson, I made him nervous when he saw me in the room. I told him that I was actually here to take him back. But in all sincerity, let me compliment you on your, on your choice. Greg is as fine an administrator as they come, and he's ready for that, for that district level role. Hate to lose him. Hate to lose him. I'm losing him both ways. I'm retiring in Missouri, but also just that he's leaving Rockwood. But pleased that he's coming to you all, and you'll, you'll never regret your decision. He'll do phenomenal work for you. So I congratulate you on your choice. So the partnership, Keith's explanation of it being a toe in the water, I think, is really important, because you know, Keith, that that's just the early part of our conversation, too. We've been talking about some pretty magnificent possibilities, and all in this realm, we understand as educators, I know that you all do, as connected board members, that we're not in the industrial model anymore. And the idea of designing systems where kids come and sit, and we pour as much information into their brains as we can, so they can, you know, replicate that on a paper pencil test, that's just not what the world is all about anymore, because every single kid in this information age has an encyclopedia like we had. We were the haves when we were young, if our parents had a set of encyclopedias for us at home. And now kids, I always like to make the joke that if I'm in a conversation with a group of people, and I don't know what they're talking about, I can excuse myself to the restroom, Google whatever the content is, come back and sound like an expert. So the information age, we have to change with that. And we know that kids innovating in how we connect kids, anything hands-on, anything real-time, anything that is authentic, and what they're going to have in life. And I think that's the kind of programs we've been talking about developing. And Spark is an example of that, the early college program. And I agree, I hope that the numbers grow significantly, and I think that they will. And there will come some growing pains with those, with that growth, but those are good things, good things for us to tackle. And while the kids that are in the early college program right now will say that it's not for every kid, I think that we can think of ways down the road where it could be for every kid. I mean, maybe we've talked about, maybe some versions of that program is that it's not at the community college. Some versions of it are in the schools, in the public schools, and using our staff. And maybe it's part-time for some, maybe it's a specialized strand for others. That's ways that it can grow. The same with Spark. I think there's probably more strands to develop, and definitely more interest in our kids, because the idea of finding their spark and their passion is the way to connect them. If school is meaningful to them, then we've accomplished what we're here to do, and that's to help a kid, you know, fall in love with life and thrive in the world. So I'm glad that before I move on to another state, that I'm part of putting this in motion. And I have to concur, Keith and I have worked extremely well together. It's been a great partnership. I think there's a lot of people that view West County schools as being kind of a sum total of just one very large opportunity for public education. So thank you for your contributions and all that you do. And we're excited, and I'll be excited to listen to the, you know, where it goes and how it grows. And it, we're getting started. I remember we had a meeting not too long ago, Chelsea, remember? You remember, Kevin, we had, I think you made the comment, are we starting, are we talking about starting this in the fall? And we are, we are. We kind of kicked that back and forth, is it a year worth of planning? But here we are, and we should be able to. The management is in place in Rockwood for the early college partnership. The management is in place for Spark. So all we have to do is add the kids, and those are the ingredients, and it's ready to roll, so.
So board members, any questions? Or as you can see, Eric's a little passionate about this topic.
I'll just say, I'm a huge advocate for finding ways to engage students. So I'm very excited about this. Thank you both for, and the rest of the Parkway admin team for embarking on this. The one question I have is how are the students going to be selected? Or how will the new, the students going into the reciprocation, how will that process take place, and how will those students be identified to go into each of those programs?
Well, I think that that remains with each school district as far as the selection process. So we'll just handle the management, and for instance, on the early college partnership in regards to, there will be a way that Parkway vets the students that go in. You'll have a waitlist right off the bat, and you'll definitely have a waitlist the second year. And the same with the strands and the Spark program. We'll just do that from a counseling perspective, and kids who really fit that the best and work through that with, and we'll have the same thing. We probably won't have overwhelming interest at first. We'll be finding those kids. The selection process is going to get more difficult as that grows, and hopefully we can find ways to grow it as well. But I think the uniqueness of each child, and the uniqueness of that program, and matching it to make sure that it's optimal on both ends is, you know, probably how both sides will be vetting.
Jennifer Stanfield has told me that she's working with the high school principals for us, you know, finding students for the early college program. And the idea is to maybe have, definitely open up a couple of students from each high school, and have the principals and their counselors work with those students who might be the best candidates for this. So that process is underway. I don't think we finalized it yet, but I think it's underway. I'm looking over at Chelsea and Kevin. You know, we're just the vision guys. We're just, you know, we let other people, we let other people, and maybe Chelsea has a little bit more.
We worked today in identifying the timeline with the high school principals, and talked about the student that we might be looking for. So the principals are going to go back and talk with their counselors and assistant principals. And since we're just starting small, we will, the principals will identify some students in their schools, make contact with parents, and start the process. And we have a timeline all the way to the meeting with Todd at the Wildwood Community Center in late April. So I think we've got a good process. And working with Todd, we see how they assess students based on an SA and the Accuplacer that the kids will take at the community college.
Again, it's going to be, you know, a small number of students, and, you know, we'll know that-
Are these junior-level students or juniors?
They'll actually sophomore. Sophomeres will become juniors.
Sophomeres becoming juniors.
Beginning their junior year.
Right, right.
Yeah. Maybe you want to just, you got any more stories you want to talk about with the students that are graduating this year? I mean, there was some great stories last week at the board.
Yeah, they, Maddie, the one, she was one of our ambassadors, if you will, when Parkway came over to visit. But she actually came in as a junior and wrapped up her associate's degree this past December, and is already a student at Webster University, and technically a junior at Webster University, and she's not 18 years old yet. So her early graduation, her early college, she was talking about her plans, I think, I think in a, you know, in a year and a half or so, she'll be graduating with a bachelor's degree and moving on to her master's. So it's phenomenal. And the kids, I think something that was really special about what they all have to say is, you know, all of my years in education, I think it's always, we can learn a lot for our high schools, to see that when we worry about all the rules and regulations we have to put in place for high school kids, and then we stop and we think, the very next year, they go off to college and they self-manage so well. And it's not like anybody's flipping a switch, it's just that they understand those expectations. And all of these kids talk about that, how they're in college, and they take that seriously, and there's expectations about college. And they all like to speak to, you know, they eat lunch when they go eat lunch, and they, you know, drive there, and sometimes they're done early, and they have longer vacations in the winter, all those kinds of things. But they talk about the responsibility that comes with it. So it's kind of a neat thing. And I really think, again, if we can find ways to connect all kids, because there's other programs like this. Rankin Tech has a similar program in the Fort Zumwalt School District, where kids are getting their career tech credentials while they're in high school, in Fort Zumwalt Schools. So we need to explore those things as well, and find a path for every child. And maybe someday, it's the path that gets every kid some post-secondary education directly toward what they're going to do in life.
Well, and I would think in addition, it is an economic advantage, because college is becoming so expensive, and it just puts some people, they can't afford to go. So I see this as being an economic advantage as well, that they've already got two years of college education behind them, and then they only need to pay for, or find funding for an additional two years. That said, I'm wondering, is there a fee for these students going through the college path here?
Yes, there is, and we're putting in our budget for the first year for the, you know, the students that will be. So it's, we're taking on responsibility as Rockwood did. And so it is, it is a wonderful opportunity for the students, because we're still, they're still technically high school students that are, we're, you know, helping get through a program here. So I know there's other models, I'm not sure what Fort Zumwalt others do, that do have students who pay some of the fee. And that's something we'll have to talk about down the road if it grows. But I know Rockwood's made quite a commitment and worked-
Yeah, we have. We're going to continue the commitment. And really, the way you look at it, I mean, it's covered in the money that we get, the money we spend per pupil, the money we get, the reimbursement from the state. I mean, we are in a really good situation with St. Louis Community College. And you all probably know, St. Louis Community College's relationship with West County has been a little bit of an effort for them. You know, when I was the superintendent in the Melville School District, they built a campus on Baumgartner down in extreme South County, right before the Merrimack River. And it's like 13th grade. I mean, it's, a whole lot of kids attend the program. And I think, I honestly think that the leadership in St. Louis Community College tried to replicate that in the Wildwood campus. It's a beautiful campus, and they had a lot of expansion plans, so they haven't done any of those, but it's been a ghost town. West County kids just don't tend to tap into the community college. Suddenly, they're interested because of those very things. Their parents are getting them interested, and that, whether it's the ability to get ahead, that sense of accomplishment, but they can't beat the price, because they're basically getting it for the same price that their, you know, their tax money is paying for. It's not out of pocket. And I think with a commitment, at some point in time, those expenses, the number of kids that we have in there now, 30 kids per grade, 11th and 12th grade, it really doesn't cause us to have to reduce teachers, you know, we're not pulling so many kids out of our other high schools that we, that we have the ability to reduce teachers, or run any fewer buses, or, you know, the utilities still are on. So we really can't find ways to, you know, we don't need to reduce expenses. But clearly, if there's a day where there are hundreds of children involved, then we have to, we have to consider how we address that. But I don't think it means, people get nervous, and if we have any Parkway staff members here that get nervous and hear, oh, that means reduction in staff in a way, I don't view it that way. I view it as a way of just handling large populations, and we can be creative. Again, we get programs in our schools, as well as we do on the college campus, that can be creative and just tap into more kids.
So what does the schedule look like for a junior?
For the junior? It's very much, it's very much like what we all experienced in college. The one unique thing about the program, and when we created it, we took this page out of the book of some other programs that were doing something similar. They have a gathering space that Todd Minicello kind of manages, because the fact that they are high school kids in college. And they spoke to us about how important that has been to them, but that networking with each other and connecting together where they can, in between classes. But, you know, a typical day, it depends on the exact classes that they're taking and when they're meeting, but it's very college-like. You know, they're free during lunch, they have class in the morning, they have class in the afternoon. We don't, we don't really have any evening, that's another way of expanding in the future. This may be appropriate for kids that, for whatever reason, need schooling to be not in the traditional timeframe. Because if you go over to Wildwood Campus at 3:30, 4 o'clock, it's still a ghost town. But they're willing, the chancellor has said that they're willing to consider, you know, evening courses as well. So, but other than that, I mean, kids go and come as they, you know, as they need to, according to the classes, and they act as college students do. And they have that meeting time that is a check-in space, and it's required by Todd, so we can just stay on top of making sure that they're fitting into the college life, because it is an adjustment for them.
And I'm so impressed, Todd is viewed by these students as just a person they can count on and trust, and go to his problems. He's done a wonderful job, and I, our students will have that opportunity. So he's really, he's been, I think that's, almost one of them identified him as a real asset for their success.
Yes, he's done a great job.
How's transportation handled?
That is, it's on the students for transportation. Now, we do have some scenarios where, you know, we don't want to exclude any child, so we have some of our students that are city resident students, and we have been able to create transportation through the VIC program for them to get to the Wildwood Community College, and I'm sure that can be the same. I mean, the same VIC management handles Parkway as they do Rockwood. But resident kids, for the most part, it's, they're either driving themselves, they're carpooling, or parents are taking some of them. But we wouldn't want to exclude any kids, so. And that, not from the VIC perspective, because the same transportation can bring your city resident students. But as far as resident students, it's really convenient for Rockwood because of the geographic location, you know? So if we had to, you know, so we wouldn't exclude a kid, if we had to throw them into our transportation somehow and pick them up, we could probably accomplish that. That would be more of a challenge for Parkway, obviously not as convenient, because you're, it's a little bit of a farther drive. But so far, that really hasn't been, really hasn't been an issue. Most kids who are juniors are very interested in driving themselves anyway. And so so far, we've, it's been fine.
Well, again, thank you, board, for listening, and we'll keep you posted on the progress. And again, I'm excited, we all are, to move forward. I think the Rockwood community is excited about the opportunities with the strands, the Spark strands. And again, I just want to thank you, Eric, for, you know, working, working on this together. And as we said last week at our board meeting at Rockwood, Eric is moving on, but we know that, we think we have this established, that Eric's going to, when he transitions, is going to tell the new superintendent, Dr. Miles, that this is, this is going to happen.
Absolutely. He's already on board. Don't worry about that.
But Eric, thanks for coming over. I know it's been a long day, and I really appreciate your, you know, your passion here and your discussion with the board and giving- and your discussion with the Board and giving, giving us a real good idea, I think, for our Board, the early college program. So appreciate it.
We're excited, we're excited. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate and thanks to Chelsea and Kevin and Jennifer and all the, our teams have just been great because Keith's right, we're visionaries and we sit back and let the real people do the work and put it all together. And they've done, done a great job. So thanks to them, thanks for having me.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, I'd like to invite Amy Joyce, Chief Human Resources Officer, and Dr. Kevin Beckner, Assistant Superintendent of TLA, to come share with us some calendar information.
Yes, good evening, President Todd, Vice President Sortino, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, and Ms. Stover. So we are pleased to have a work session this evening on the 2020-2021 school calendar. We convened the calendar committee in the fall of 2018 and the calendar committee is comprised of teachers and administrators from various levels. And we had an option at that time to look at the new House Bill 1606 that gave us some flexibility to look at student attendance hours only versus student attendance days and hours combined. And so with that pause, we then sought feedback from the superintendent's action team, the Board of Education, and school principals. And everybody gave us the thumbs up and said, yes, let's look at some flexibility. Because over the years, we have had more demands on our teachers as it relates to professional development and mandatory training and, you know, just PLC time to collaborate on student data. And so we sought feedback from the parents as well. We have had late start days. Kevin, how long have we been doing that?
Six years, I think.
About six years. And so we felt it was a time where we needed to get, seek some feedback from our community on how is it working, should it continue, would you rather have full days off versus late start, would you rather have early release versus late start? So we asked questions to parents and teachers to see what their preference was, knowing that we still had a need for professional development. So we sought feedback from our administrators, our community, our teachers. And then Amy GC went to the Professional Learning Action Team and talked with them about what would be best practice with PLC time and how often should we have that PLC time. So this evening, we have a proposal for the Board to consider and give us some feedback that calculates the number of hours that our students would go to school versus days and hours. But I can tell you that we, with this proposed calendar, would be attending 177 days of school and we are above the 1044 instructional hours for student instruction. So at this time, we would entertain any feedback and questions that you may have. After this evening, we will have a period of time to make any modifications to the calendar and then we would bring it back in April for the public hearing and then Board vote. Kevin, do you want to talk about maybe the major changes?
Sure. So as Amy alluded to, we had multiple pressures pushing on our system, particularly around professional development, PLC time. Specifically, we have three new, three new developments required for teachers that were the result of state law that we had to figure out how do we fit into our calendar. Those were some things that we knew were on the plate and then some that came at the last minute, that all of a sudden, we had to make adjustments and be flexible. So to accomplish that, we did have to sacrifice some regular professional development time for staff so that they could incorporate some of that development into the calendar. This calendar includes some of that by adding a fourth day at the beginning of the school year for teachers when they return to try to accomplish some of that. The second big change is from feedback related to our PLC time. And as a reminder, our PLC and professional development are slightly different. Our PLC time is dedicated time for staff to look at student work and really ask those questions about are students learning the way we expect? If not, what do we need to do to help them? If they are, what do we need to do to help them? And both the feedback from our parent community and from our teacher community is that there was a preference to move those from late start to early release. And that was the majority in both sets of surveys. And so we have recommended that that be a change that's included in this particular calendar. We also have heard a lot from our buildings that say, you know, we're having to give up some of this time too for development around some of these mandates and we have building initiatives we need to do and we have things we know our staff needs to work on that might be different than just the district. Say, for example, if our building is going for a state or national school of character, we need time to work on that and that's getting squeezed. So this calendar also includes three half-days of building or PLC development that the principals in the schools would be able to decide how that would be best used. And that was another advantage of this particular calendar. I believe those are some of the key highlights, but if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to address those as well.
And we talked about or thought about how we're communicating all these changes to the community, to the parents?
So our communication department has been intimately involved. Once we know what the final calendar will be after all of our next steps, then we'll certainly be working on that. But I can tell you that both Paul Tandy and Annie Dickerson have been intimately involved in the calendar development process. And I know that they're obviously very in tune with all the ways we need to communicate with our community. And certainly, there'll be steps along the way where we have to do that. I don't know if you had anything more specific, Amy?
Generally, the upcoming school year calendar isn't published until later on in the fall or winter. So certainly, we would want to move that timeline up so parents could maybe plan for the next school year with just the change in the late start versus early release.
I think one other note that's just nice, based on the hour change, we would actually have seven snow days built into our calendar based on the number of hours. So if you, just knowing that this year, we've had to use one of our inclement weather makeup days, because it would be based on hours, not days, if that were in place this year, we would be able to utilize that now in this calendar, we'll be able to do that as well.
That's why the superintendent gives us a real thumbs up.
That's right.
My, so my, my big question is with regard to early release now. One of the controversies that came up when this was all being looked at years ago was the issue that now we're having students released early, but now we've got sports, we have after-school activities, how are we going to get them back there? Have you, what's the idea behind?
Yeah, we actually have the added benefit of some of our schools are currently actually, some of our high schools, because they have additional time built into their calendars, are currently doing three early releases per school year. So they've already developed those processes because they're already in place and they're already using those. We essentially expand the practices they're already using around those in terms of supervising students, making sure they get to their activities. We'd have to use those more frequently, but the answer is basically, they're already in place and our schools have already figured out ways to supervise kids, make sure they're staying safe, and make sure that they can still get to their athletic and activities and events after school.
So I know one of the ways that they're doing it is in athletic study hall. So is that what you're saying, that whatever is currently in place on things like that, that they will do that, they will continue?
Yeah, that's certainly an option. And schools might decide that they want to try a different option. Those decisions would really be made at the school level based on the available staff that they have, the kind of work that they're doing in that building. And that would be really up to the principal. But using that athletic study hall that they might use at West High or using a different method that they use at a different school, all of those would be available options. And what I do know is, as Dr. Watson continues to work with our principals, that would be something they collaborate on, particularly at the secondary level, so that they can determine the best way to do that. But that would really be a building-based decision. Like I said, the good news is they already have some practices that they can draw on. But those aren't the only practices that they could use, there could be other, other ways that they could handle that, that would really be up to the building principal.
Well, would that be true at the elementary level though, too? So if there's stuff after school for the elementary schools?
So at the elementary level, what's most likely to happen, I say most likely again because we have, what, a year and a half to plan for implementation, is they would schedule around that so that their activities were not on those early release days. Since they don't have daily typically after-school activities at the elementary level, they would work their calendar so that they would be on a different date.
Okay.
Kevin, Amy, maybe you want to just comment too. If you look at the calendar, while in the past, we had PLC late ends on a fine week, we got criticized sometime because that'll sometime rub up against.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. We currently have eight, eight late starts built into our calendar, essentially one per month during the school year. This increases that number to 10 and they're more strategically placed throughout the school year so that we can try to space them a little bit further away from, if you remember when we used to do the first Wednesday of the month, we would like come back from winter break and then almost right away have, have a early release or late start. And people would say, that doesn't make any sense, why are we doing that? Well, because we're breaking it away from being always this week of the month. That allows us flexibility to try to space those in a way that is more logical and away from, say, as many long weekends as we can move them away from and other things so that it just makes more sense for families.
So would Adventure Club be available for elementary students on those release days?
That's a question I don't know the answer to, but we have Mike Seppi who's sitting right here who could probably help us with that.
Does it? Yeah.
And then one more question is, so what, why, why is January 4th going to be a day off? So why would we not have people coming, every, every students and everything coming back on, on January the 4th? We've got one, you know, lingering day there. It would, it would seem like a natural way to just have everybody come back on January the 4th after holiday winter break.
I think the need for probably a workday for staff is.
So Debbie, this is part of the collaboration with, with the teachers. So I would want to ask Pat specifically why they have the students coming back, but we do have the two unpaid days, of course, the first, which is a Friday, and then another day off and with students coming back on the 5th. So I can get that feedback for you with, with what the thought was behind that. We generally have a workday and then students come back. So that's what it is. So there's, we have to have a records day.
We have to have a records day.
We have to have a records day before we come back from finals. In the past, we used to have it at the end of the semester in December. So that's part of the PNEA contract currently that we have to build that in. So that's why. And then we have the workday after that.
So is, let's see, December 22nd, okay, so December 22nd is finals. So then their first day of winter break would be December 23rd.
Yeah.
So then we're having winter break then between, which is a half-day on the 22nd. So then the 23rd through January 4th for students and staff?
So it's basically two weeks, two full weeks off for students.
So then, so then are students coming back on January 5th?
They're coming back on the 6th.
6th.
They're coming back on the 6th.
So students are coming back on January the 6th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's a 14-day break, basically, for students, including the weekends.
Yes.
Does that seem long compared to, because it seems kind of long, doesn't it, for students to be?
On ours.
I think, I think it's an average, you know, you'll, you'll see anywhere between, you know, 10 and, and.
And I know some of it's with how the holiday falls.
Yeah, that's true. Because some years, like this year, we had it relatively short, I think.
And we always have the push and the pull when we start school and where we want to end with finals before the holiday break.
But I'm also thinking about parents trying to find childcare and coverage for, you know, those, those days that seem a little odd off, so.
And of course, this is all dependent on current legislation that could have us starting much earlier.
Yes.
Or much later.
Much later, yes, much later. That is correct.
Amy, I have a question that the younger version of me would be ashamed of the older version of me asking, but if, if we have seven built-in, if we have the capacity for seven built-in snow days, why aren't we going to school more?
Well, currently, we have 191 days built in our school calendar for teachers, that is the teacher work calendar. And so within that work calendar, we've got 177 student contact days and then the gap up to 191, our teacher development records day and exchange day for conferences. So we could actually go more days, but then that adds to the teacher's contract.
Okay.
And then in, in April, is it that there's two days off or no? Just one day off, right? Conference camp day, comp day?
The comp day.
Comp day for teachers? So, so April 2nd would be a day off?
For students, yes, and staff.
I'm assuming that's Good Friday, usually that's, yeah, that's usually.
Okay. And then we're going back in March to having the Friday before spring break off?
Yes.
Because we, that's been not happening for a few years.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and what's the reason for adding it back again?
Well, it was a preference that we have, the Friday before spring break. Kevin, did you hear any other feedback?
I can also say just some of the things that are part of our agreement with the, with the Teachers Association, with the PNEA, is we have to have a certain number of, that difference between 191 contract days and student contact days, we also have to have, we can't go over that number. And so if we want to make sure that we start and end at the specific time, second semester in particular, you know, that are most reasonable and most helpful for parents, we have to build some of those days in. For example, we, you notice the colors that there have to be a certain number of unpaid days off. And so we actually have to put some of those someplace in the calendar. So we try to be as logical as we possibly can to make sure that we're being, you know, as responsible as we can. So as we looked, our actual initial draft that we presented to the NEA, they said, you've got us working too many days per the contract. That's just a thing, we counted incorrectly and we had more days. And so we had to figure out, well, where's the place that both we have community feedback that says this is a preference for both our community and for our teachers? And so two of those days are the ones you've actually noted and identified, like that January 4th day, I believe is one of those, one of those days. And that April, I'm sorry, the Friday before spring break is the other one of those days. They have to go somewhere in the calendar and those days seem to be the most logical given that we have some feedback from our community that says we have a preference for two full weeks at winter break. And then there was a strong preference for having that Friday back that we haven't had for a couple of years.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you. If you do have additional feedback or questions, you can email me and we will get back to you. We will bring this to the Board of Education in April for consideration for approval.
I would just say, you mentioned a few times, but I mean, our, our work with Pat McParland and the teachers has been, it's a very collaborative.
Absolutely.
I mean, you guys really work hard to make sure everybody gets heard and we look at, yeah, we look at the survey, the parents' feedback, we try to listen to all.
I would say this calendar had a lot of eyes on it and feedback from, you know, parents to principals to teachers. And I really feel that everybody, and Pat, I don't want to speak for you, but we did touch base, that we think that this is a very favorable calendar option for, for the Board.
Is he nodding back there?
He is nodding, yes. He has a thumbs up.
And did we have the athletic directors involved this year too and with that?
Mike Rolf was.
Mike Rolf, yeah.
Mike Ross was involved and was present at our last meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both very much. Okay, we have no special meeting tonight. The next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, April 10th, at Parkway Central. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. At this time, the Board will reconvene into closed session. And we thank you for coming and be careful driving home.